Okay, Council roll call.
Counselor Daniel?
I'm here.
All counselors present with Counselor Grego and Counselor Carson requesting to be excused and their absences are excused.
Okay, thank you. Up next, we have the agenda approval. Counselor Beal.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve the agenda as presented, excusing Mr. Carson and Mr. Gregel from the meeting.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not? Please start voting.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, Citizen Comments. This is the segment of the agenda to where we ask those who have filled out comment cards to come up to the podium, make their comments. We do ask that you keep your comments to within three minutes. If you're still talking at the three-minute mark, I will politely ask you to end the conversation at that point. Ms. Martinez, I don't have any comment cards.
I don't have any either, Mayor.
Okay, so we'll go ahead to the Zoom participants and see if you don't mind giving them instructions of how to raise their hand, and then we'll allow them to make any comments.
Sure. If you're on the Zoom app and you want to speak right now for Citizen Comments, you'll use the Raise Your Hand feature in the bottom of your screen, or you could dial Star Night. And I don't see anyone raising their hand, Mayor.
Okay, since we don't have anyone's hands raised on Zoom, we would close this segment of the agenda for Citizen Comments, and we'll move on down to ceremonial items. We have National Nursing Home Week proclamation, and I know we have some people in the audience from the nursing home. If you all don't mind, just come up here to the podium for those who are here to celebrate the proclamation. All right, good. So what we're going to do is we're going to read the proclamation, and then we'll come down and take a picture with you, but if you would like to say a few words about what's been going on, we'll be glad to listen to you, and then I'll read the proclamation. Anyone wants to speak up? Okay, all right, all right. All right, proclamation for National Nursing Home Week. May the fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, maybe May the fourteenth through the twentieth of twenty twenty-three, the city of Alamosa, Colorado. Whereas skilled nursing and rehabilitation centers in Alamosa, Colorado, and around the country provide health care to citizens with a wide variety of health care needs, and whereas these citizens have spent many years of their lives building our community and country into what it is today. And whereas the American Health Care Association is celebrating National Nursing Home Week in skilled nursing and rehab centers across the country from Mother's Day, May the fourteenth, through Saturday, May the twentieth of twenty twenty-three, with the theme cultivating kindness. And whereas residents and outpatient at these centers, as well as the staff serving them, deserve recognition for their contributions. Now therefore, I, Ty Coleman, as mayor of Alamosa, Colorado, and on behalf of the entire city council, encourage every citizen of our community to honor and serve the residents and patients of skilled nursing and rehab centers by visiting or volunteering at the local nursing homes to bring good cheer to residents and appreciation to staff who care for the most vulnerable citizens on our behalf. We want to thank you all so very much for what you do, for those in need and those citizens in our community. Does anyone have any comments before we go down and take a picture? All right, okay, so no one wants to talk, so we'll come down. Okay, thank you, Council. That brings us to the next proclamation, National Public Works Week proclamation. Our city council, we work together as a team, and we share in reading proclamations. So tonight, Counselor Hensley will be reading the National Public Works Week proclamation. We have Mr. Reynolds up here. If you want to say a few words before we read it, bring it down to you. You're more than welcome to.
I don't know if I have as much to say as the nurses, but we'll give it a shot. No, we've made a lot of changes in the last few years, and we appreciate the support from the community council. The city manager made a lot of changes, a big difference, so we appreciate it. So we've got a great staff. We're blessed.
So, May twenty-first through the twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, connecting the world through public works. Whereas public work professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of the city of Alamosa. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public work professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the city of Alamosa to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and the public work programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year twenty twenty-three marks the sixty-third Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association, Vietnam, resolved that Mayor Ty Coleman does hereby designate the week of May twenty-first through the twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, as National Public Works Week. He urges all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public work professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contribution they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. And then it has the seal and a signature.
Okay, any comments, anybody?
I'm just gonna say something real quick. It's interesting. Obviously, there's a lot of projects that go on and a lot that you and your team do, but obviously, it's all of the unexpected that also comes up and how you have to deal with that. And one of the things I kind of joke about, but it's not necessarily funny because it's a lot of hard work, but obviously, as you dig all the things that you're finding, and I think our city was just consistently built on top of each other because all the layers that you seem to come across anytime you start digging a hole.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley. Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. Harry, you and your team do such an amazing job. I just want to say thank you for all of that work, and we just keep adding more projects to you all, and you keep saying we can do this, and you get it done, and your team is always smiling, and they're always friendly. And so I just really wanted to say thank you. Your team does a wonderful and amazing job.
Thank you.
And Harry, I'll wrap things up. I was once told that public works is the heartbeat of the city, and after seeing all the work that you all do, I understand why. So thank you for all the hard work you and your team do for our community, okay? Thank you. All right, we'll come down and present. Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, Consent Calendar A. Counselor Beal?
Mayor, I move that we approve Consent Calendar A.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, if not, please start voting.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, presentations from outside agencies, update on the transmission line from Madam Chair, County Commissioner Lasky.
Thank you. Can't decide if I'm tall enough or short enough for one of these. First of all, I want to thank you very much for the opportunity to share with you this evening about one of the projects that we're working, not only in Alamosa County, but kind of a regional development on a transmission line. I first want to say this is not something that just one entity is working on. It has a very broad collaboration. And two of my favorite partners on this project that have kind of got, I would say, one of them got me started, and one of them's going to help me in the project. So I'd like to introduce Erin Minks from Senator Bennett's office and Sarah Stover from the Council of Governments and Developmental Resource Group. So the story, to clarify first off, we're talking about a transmission line, and we have two different types. And I just want to clarify when people are looking at it, a distribution line, which is a line that goes to your house, and lines that Excel is now changing, those kind of run about forty-five kilovolts. We are talking about a transmission line that is three hundred and forty-five to five hundred kilovolts. So this isn't the ones that go to your house, and this isn't the line that we're hearing all of the talk about going to Aunt Nita. This is a large transmission line coming in. And so to start the story, what we have looked at is that in the valley, right now, we have three transmission lines coming in. Sounds like a lot, but they're only coming in an area about from here to the river. And they're coming over Poncha Pass, and they are in a beetle kill area and an area that is highly prone for fire. So when we found out after, if you all remember, Boulder in the winter of twenty-one, December of twenty-one, we lost utilities, we lost electricity down here for a number of hours. And what it brought to our attention is items like people with oxygen concentrators, some of the gates at, you know, different places, that electricity was an important part of actually could be a life or death, and that we needed to look at some other elements of that. We have also had all of the emergency managers in the San Luis Valley have now indicated transmission line or power outages as a hazard and ranked them both as a high possibility of happening and with a large amount of people expected to be impacted by it. In fact, of the households, Excel has seventy-seven percent of the households, or nineteen thousand five hundred. So if one, two of those lines went down, that's how many households in the San Luis Valley would be without power. So dating back as far as nineteen ninety-seven, there is documentation that they have felt that the San Luis Valley did not have adequate transmission lines. So this is a project that is just coming forward. Now, the current story of how it started. Back in late September of twenty twenty-two, Erin Minks with Senator Bennett's office and Senator Cleve Simpson had established a meeting for us to visit with about them putting the San Luis Valley study on what is called the Public Utilities Commission as a miscellaneous docket. In the past, they have not included us, Erin might answer too, that they didn't feel that there was enough support here. So they have always passed us over and not considered putting a large transmission line here. And we'll talk more about that. So there's two elements. We have the PUC that we started with. We became what are called participants in this miscellaneous docket. We are hoping that that miscellaneous docket will move to a regular docket, and we can go forward and they will do the study. But in the meantime, what we looked at is that the Public Utility Company puts a lot of, or Public Utility Commission, excuse me, puts a lot of emphasis on what the cost would be on the end users, which we all agree, we don't want increased utility bills, and building these projects usually does end up on the back of the user. So I visited last December with the Colorado Energy Office about the possibility of a grant so that some of these funds could be taken off of that, and the Public Utility Commission would consider doing this because the cost would be a little more possible. So with that, Erin, we had this meeting. We started moving forward. I also realized in December, when I talked with the office, that we were going to apply for a federal grant that I needed some assistance with that, and I reached out to the Council of Governments and told them, you guys have the history of solar in the valley. You also have the ability to pull in all of the municipalities and the counties and do this at a broader level of what I'm doing, and that's how that partnership started. So moving forward, as of today, we are working with the Colorado Energy Office. We are submitting a forty million dollar grant. We have forty-five million dollars in matching funds from the utility companies that are going to do this. And what this will do is we have an emphasis on resiliency and safety and redundancy, but also the economic impact that this will bring to the San Luis Valley. Heather, I don't have the final draft of that, since we have to submit it by midnight. Sometime during the evening, I will send that to you to share with council so you can read through it and see some of the work that we've done. So one of the things, this grant is called GRIP Grant. It's a grid resiliency and innovative partnership program. Like I said, we are applying for forty million. The goal is to build a transmission project for resiliency and access. We've also termed a new word, remote clean energy, that we are using throughout the application. The Colorado Electric Transmission Authority is the one that has put in the budget for being able to do this study in the San Luis Valley. We also have another component of this grant, and that is the grant requires a couple of elements. One, there has to be an innovative approach to it. So we are working with Colorado Springs Utilities. They have developed a new transmission technology, technology, reconducting, and actually, it's called an aluminum conductor composite reinforcement. And what it does is it makes sure that there's not the loss of utility or loss of power as it goes through the line. It's also a smaller line that is better in wind. So they feel they are doing a project in Colorado Springs, and that will be the product that we would use in the San Luis Valley because it's less resistant to wind, which we have, and it also provides, actually, it's more efficient. And that's what we're moving forward on that. Why do I think, because I'm running out of time? Why do I think we have a good chance of this? A couple of items is that, one, in this federal grant, we are in what is called the Justice Forty County. That is one of the areas that they're looking at. We are considered a Zone Four, which is the highest zone for solar. For example, the cost of solar in the San Luis Valley is like thirty-six to forty-six dollars is what utility companies can pay. That's eleven to sixty percent lower than what they can get from renewable energy, either wind or solar in other places that maybe is lacking our days of sunlight or our altitude. Colorado has new energy goals. They have to have all of the coal plants closed by twenty thirty-one, which is another driver of this. Utility companies at this point have the matching funds, and there's a lot of federal funds out there for the infrastructure, especially innovation, and that's why we feel it's a once-in-a-lifetime. Just so you know, I did compromise on this. One, I didn't want to include Colorado Springs, but we needed the innovative part of it. New Mexico is included. I did originally not want to do that, but the grant to build this line will be two hundred and forty million or four hundred and fifty million if we include a possibility of an outside state or another state. And we are looking at four different paths that could possibly be the new line that we go through. And the final thing is we weren't able to put into this grant to have it built because you actually have to have the plans. So this plan, this grant is to do the planning and the planning of a stakeholder engagement and all of those items. And I'm sorry, I'm going to go over a little bit because I want to give my other two people opportunity to speak, and that's kind of a quick, and I'm open for questions after them. What do you want to add?
Appreciate the opportunity. Erin and Commissioner Lasky have both spearheaded this, and we're appreciating being able to support the work by providing letters of support, by engaging multiple layers of government through the federal, state, regional, through the valley, municipal, county, everybody. So I'm really hoping that this will be a successful project, and I'm excited to see some of the work that can come forward, especially since Commissioner Lasky has worked so tirelessly on pushing this rock up the hill. So, thank you.
Okay, so I'll open it up for some comments from any of the council members. Any comments, Council? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Minks.
Yeah, I think it's just, this is the latest chapter of a long, multi-decade effort. So I just want to call out those of you who remember the last round. If you're wondering why this is different, you're welcome to reach out for more background because this is a different funding scenario with the Inflation Reduction Act funds that Congress passed. And then we're also running into some, Levita passes has a conservation easement that is a significant barrier. We're talking about a different discussion at this stage than we have in the past. So I just put that out there for context, but there's an amazing collection of critical forces at this round for us to make a compelling case.
And I want to add one other thing. We actually did a concept paper. You had to be invited to apply for this grant. There was a hundred and ninety-eight concept papers. They accepted eighty of those, and one of ours was that concept paper, so.
Oh, that is awesome. Well, thank you, Madam Chair Lasky, Ms. Minks, and Ms. Stover. We appreciate your remote clean energy efforts, and we wish you much success. We appreciate the update.
And Mayor, if I can just share, because Commissioner Lasky came and met with Rachel online. She wasn't condensed to ten minutes for that discussion, but it was a lot clearer during that discussion, too, of just this serendipitous timing of her being up in Denver and thinking, hey, I'm just going to walk into the energy and say, I feel like there's connections here, and just as when they were trying to figure out some of this funding and how to connect it. And so there's been a lot of legroom from all the partners, and it's just, it's really great to see because I think it's obviously very important to us, and that with our workload and bandwidth, we wouldn't have been able to come anywhere near what Commissioner Lasky and the partners have come up with here. So it's very fortunate, and it does seem very, very promising. So congratulations.
Thank you all, and it's very impressive. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right, that brings us to the next item on the agenda. We're going to get the fortunate opportunity to introduce our new ASU president, President Tanberg. If you could come up to the podium here today.
Thank you so much, Mayor, and council members. It's a privilege to reintroduce myself. I was here shortly after I was named interim president, and it's great to come back now after recently being named the permanent president. And thank you to Commissioner Lasky and the incredible work you've done on the transmission line project. It's obviously something that would be critically important to Adam State and the entire region. So it was great to hear that by midnight it'll be submitted. That's really scary. I've been at that crunch time on submitting big grants, and so I'm surprised you're still here. But seriously, thank you for that. That's a hard act to follow. So I thought I would do two things in today's presentation, kind of a retrospective on the past year, and then some thoughts on where we might be taking Adam State in the next two, three, five, ten years. So it's been an exciting year for Adam State. I think it's one that we could appropriately describe as being a year of regrouping, of growth, of coming together, of re-energizing and the like. And I would love, I love this opportunity to go on record of commending the faculty, staff, students of Adam State. We've seen what I would call rather remarkable progress in the last ten, eleven months with reconnecting with the community, but also reconnecting with each other, of looking to the future with some hope. And so, and it pans out, and it plays out in the data also. We had the highest fall-to-spring retention rate that we've had in years. We're also way up on applications, on admitted students, and on enrolled students. This is, you know, it's an area we absolutely cannot count our chickens until they've hatched. We enroll students, we recruit and enroll students all the way up to what we call a census, which is a few weeks into the semester. But we're tracking way better than we have in the past. And where that growth is greatest is in our first-time, brand-new students. And so we're seeing a real uptick in interest from students like graduating high school seniors and others who have never been to college. And so that's really good because that's where we had, we'd been hurting. And if you're down in one year, then you're going to be down in the second, third, and fourth, and we're still suffering a little bit from that. So our juniors and seniors were still down, but that was because we were down three, four years ago. But being up in these first-time students shows a reconnection, some excitement in that area that'll hopefully give us some great momentum going forward. And what I'm particularly pleased about is the fact that we've seen a significant increase in interest from our valley students. And so I made that a bit of a pet project, visiting every school district in the valley and really charging our admissions folks to focus valley first, and there's a good reason for that. Our yield rate, so from applicant to enrollee, that percentage is about twice as high, sometimes three times as high for a valley student or a valley high school than a non-valley student. So we get way more bang from our buck if we focus on the valley first. So those things are some things that I'm really excited about. We've been making some excellent hires. We invested in grassroots innovative ideas through the president's Innovation Fund to fund things that would help us retain, recruit, and graduate students. And we got some really cool ideas. I think that put some great energy into the campus. And then I owe a sincere thank you to the council and members of the council for your support of our state budget requests. And so I think you saw, we got a significant twelve-point-two percent increase in our general operating appropriation. But then we also got over eight million to renovate, expand, and remodel. over eight million to renovate, expand and remodel our computing services building and capital funds. And we were the only new capital project funded this year in the state. So um we all, we 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 carried a powerful message and and we got Denver to listen. And so I'm I'm proud of everyone that came together. We we had launched a valley strategy in doing that. And so we we made it not just about Adam State. And that's why we asked valley leaders like yourselves to advocate for our funding request rather than having it come internal to Adam State. And I um, I think that's a compelling message that um we can't lose sight of. Um, so moving forward, we've got big, big, big things to do. Um, and there are moments where I feel somewhat overwhelmed. Um, but then most of the time I look at those as just incredible opportunities for us collectively to have a just a huge impact on Adams and the valley. And so our capital infrastructure, we've got major projects to undertake and these are ones that cannot be funded by the state. Um, and like I would highlight for the for the council, the the student union building. Um, it needs to be knocked down and removed and a new one needs to be built. And I want it to be a a valley center, not just a student union, but a place that we can hold big meetings where we can come together, where we can attract um events and audiences that we we just can't now because we don't have that kind of venue. Um, that's gonna take a ton of money. Um, and it's gonna take a collective effort. I'm excited about that. That's uh a type of thing that changes generations in an entire region. And so I say, let's take it on. Um, we're also looking at ways to create a more holistic student experience that better integrates both the uh co-curricular, extracurricular and curricular um experiences of our students. We're a small campus. We should be able to figure this out, that we can have a powerful wraparound experience for students where they feel like um they are, they are leaving college with the absolutely most rich experience that they could have. We can do that. Um, it's gonna take really hard work, but it's something that I'm really invested in. Um, I also, um, you know, we uh Bruce and I um met with uh Heather Brooks this morning and her team and um, we discussed ways that Adam State can knock down our Ivy walls and be better partners with the entire region, but especially our home city of Alamosa. And I'm very excited about that. Um, we're a, we're a powerful combination with a shared vision of advancing the public good. And so we should be working together in very strategic ways. And so I'm equally excited about that. I um, it's it's not very often that folks like us, you know, get to be in positions where we're here together and can do the kind of things that I think we all want to do. And um, it's a moment I don't think we want to let pass. Um, I think the team at Adam State is ready to roll up our sleeves and really advance the interest of our university, our city and our region. And so um I'll just stop by saying um um my my wife Darren, she's right over there, we're, we're we are uniquely um honored, I think, that this, what we thought would be a one-year experience um is gonna turn into what is gonna be our lives, our families' lives for the next, you know, we hope it's a good number of years, right? If you'll keep us around. So thank you for having us here with you in the, in Alamosa. And thank you for this opportunity to present some of my thoughts and ideas. And I'm really happy to take any questions you have.
Okay, thank you, uh President Tanberg. We have a councillor Hensley.
Hadn't got my light up, you saw.
I see the motion.
Um, so I'm very lucky because with my two hats, I get to be doubly excited, doubly happy with what's going on because obviously being faculty at Adam State and then my city council hat, I'm just super, super thrilled with what's gonna happen. I love the idea of the partnerships we're gonna have, uh the collaboration. Uh, I just think it makes all of us so much stronger. And I think a lot of the different visions you have really ties in with Alamosa and the San Luis Valley. And I think it's just, it's gonna just make us that much stronger all the way around. So I'm super excited.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hensley. Uh, we have uh councillor Daniel, followed by councillor V Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Tanberg, for being here tonight. I have already seen, I think, some of the changes with the relationships and reaching out, the things in the school districts. It's been amazing to see this last year, how much Adam State has really, I think, embraced the community around it. And I just really wanted to say thank you for that and that vision and that energy your team has put behind it because I think that is gonna make a huge difference um as we continue to go forward and really give our students the opportunities that Adam State can give them. Um, and it's been wonderful to see that that growth and that change. And so I just really wanted to say thank you and we're very excited to have you staying on board. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh councillor Daniel, councillor V Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Dr. Tanberg, uh as I hear you speak, like you're getting me excited, like, what can, what can I go do to help Adam State? Uh I graduated there in thirteen, from there in thirteen. And so my hats, I have a lot of different hats and being a public school teacher in center, seeing y'all's effort up there to get students there has been phenomenal. Um, I'm just really excited for what you could do and and I'm 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 fired up with you and and whatever we can do to help. I've, I guess one little question I have for you is, um, Adam State still considered a Hispanic-serving institute?
It is, yes.
Can you maybe talk a little bit about some of those efforts and what's going on there?
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, I I've said, maybe I said it here, I've said it so many times, I can't remember where and when, but uh you know, Adam State is what Adam State is because of its location. Um, we gain our mission, our uniqueness, our strength, all of that because of the valley. And, you know, we um, and therefore we are an HSI, Hispanic Serving Institution, given the location, history and demographics of the valley. Um, and so it's something to be incredibly proud of and and I certainly am. And so we've had consistent funding. So being in HSI, that means you're a federally designated Hispanic-serving institution. Once you receive that designation, you can compete for a a special subsection of federal grants that are called Title V. And so if you're not in HSI, you can't compete. If you are, you can. There's no guarantee you'll get the money. Um, we've had consistent funding for, I believe, twenty-three years now. Um, and we were the first HSI in Colorado and we're currently working on another uh Title V grant. We're right in the midst of working on one. Um, really cool ideas that that get at that um co-curricular, curricular uh collaboration or integration that I talked about. So um, we've got, geez, I don't know how much money. And I may have me- mixed up the dollars with the years, so forgive me. But I have in my head twenty-two million dollars, but maybe it's twenty-two years. But, you know, um, we've got a lot of money from that. It 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 uh goes directly to better serving our students. So um, one thing that I speak about on campus is that if we can do right by the students who have faced the most structural barriers in their life, we'll do right by all of our students. And so focusing on those that have been faced um all sorts of systemic challenges um is the right thing for our institution to do.
And councillor Daniel, I saw your hand.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I I meant to mention this before, but we've had this earlier today, we got to do interviews for people who are interested in serving on city boards. And there were two Adam State staff members who applied to be on boards. And we have, we have other people who work at Adam State who are on boards. And I think again, it just shows the commitment that you have in your faculty and staff to serve on these boards and share their expertise with the community and want to be a part of that. And I just want to say thank you because I know you and your team encourage that. And it's just very much appreciated.
Absolutely. And it it goes to the idea of universities like Adam State, I like to refer them as stewards of place, that we are, ought to be stewards of the location that we're at. If we were to take Adam State and stick it in Denver, downtown Denver, we could close and Denver would go on just fine. Um, but here, I love how important Adams is to the community and how important community, the community is to Adam State. It just makes this whole endeavor that much more meaningful.
Okay, so I'll wrap everything up. Um, President Tanberg, it's really an honor, a privilege to have you here tonight. It really feels good to call you president without putting the interim at the beginning. Um, I feel like I've got an opportunity to know you and your wife, Darian, and you all have done a great job being here in the community. What I like about you and your family is your story about how you actually went to ASU a few years ago. Oh, few, quite a few years ago. And and uh it's like you made full, came full circle to now uh being the president. I like the um valley student efforts that you and your team are going to focus on. I also uh like the uh efforts of working and collaborating with other uh valley uh schools and and also TSC as well. Uh, to to make sure that we're addressing all the needs of the people here in our community. That means a a huge uh a lot to us. So so, thank you so very much. We wish you much success.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I just wanted to jump, I'm telling Eric, I need to figure out a way to where I can have my hand raised to have the mayor recognize me. Um, I just wanted to, it was delightful in our meeting today. Um, we were talking about different housing projects. And at one point, Rachel was talking about the Boyd project. And and Dr. Tanberg says, well, you know, I used to paint the inside of the Boyd School and used to teach in there. And then, you know, and and just some of those stories about the local connection, which I knew was there, not to that detail. Um, but it was, it it just, I don't know if I smiled on the outside, but I smiled on the inside because it just was, it was a neat conversation to be able to have and and with someone who has some of that background and connections to other parts of the community. And and that was, that was really nice. And so I just wanted to share that because it it was delightful.
Thank you, Heather.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Alrighty. Okay, that'll bring us to the next item on the agenda. We have the annual update from one of our funding partners, uh Crisis Prevention.
Hello.
Hello.
I drove down from Denver today and I spent the last two days in Denver. And as I was there, I was thinking about how awesome it is to live in Alamosa where we're so small. And where we have the ability to do things quickly, um because nothing in Denver happens quickly, nothing at the state level happens quickly. Um, but at the local level, we can do things a lot uh more quickly. And so you guys have provided us with some special funding for specifically our employment readiness program over at Crisis Prevention. And so I'm gonna talk about that tonight. Um, you wanted to very specifically um look towards some of our unsheltered population and you wanted to try and do some work around employment with those who were eligible for that, with that particular population. And we've been working on that using the funding that you provided. Um, Sean wasn't able to be here tonight, but I'm pretty excited about the work that he's been spearheading within my department. Um, since the shelter has reopened, most of the clients who are enrolled in the program period are actually those who are considered to be unsheltered. They're either checked into the shelter, living in their cars, or literally living on the streets. Um, currently, we have sixty-five enrollees. And as you look at the trend over the last three years with your funding, we've really been able to boost the number of placements and maintenance um requests. So maintenance basically means that a client will come in and they need something like non-slip shoes or some very specific type of pants in order to be able to maintain their job. And um with the funding that you've provided, we've been able to do ninety-three of those requests um for fifty-five clients. Um, we've done quite a few case management meetings per client. Um, we've really been able to boost our outcomes and it's been a really exciting program. So we just want to thank you for the quick pivot that you were able to do with that. Um, the kind of fast way that we were able to procure that funding and really move forward with it and look at that particular population and see, you know, can we really help those people get into and maintain employment. In the future, um because we've now been able to hire on a second case manager as well, we're looking to really build on those partnerships with the actual people who um provide those jobs, you know, those businesses in town. Mostly the local businesses are really who we're able to work with the most. It's very exciting because also the small business and the small town makes it easy for us to make those kinds of connections quickly. Um, so that's been very exciting. Um, one of our stories, I know we all like a little story here and there. Um, one of our clients was able to get a job that actually paid more than the case manager who helped him get the job, which I was really excited. Um, and some of the wraparound services that were available to that client helped them be able to maintain that job even through some really difficult times. So I really appreciate the money that you also provide for things like eviction mitigation, the mediation program. Um, some of the homeless prevention money that we were able to pivot from being offered to use for salaries to keep people working there, but we didn't really need it. So we pivoted that to actually helping clients. And we're really happy that one email to Heather allowed us to pivot that money as well. So three families got placements because of that money. And they were also able to participate in our employment readiness, employment readiness program. So we were able to couple those things. And those wraparound services, all housed in one building. Um, and then two buildings right next to each other, um makes it really easy. So I'm open for questions if you need.
Okay, good, good presentation. I'll start off with councillor Crebs.
First of all, I'm very short. Okay, first of all, thank you so much for all the hard work that you and your organization put into this. I know that your heart's into it and it shows every time you you speak about this. And so I deeply appreciate that. My one question is, do you have any numbers around how many jobs um you were able to connect clients to in this short amount of time?
So in, since November, when we started utilizing the money, we've had um, let's see, we've had thirty-two clients, which is actually forty-nine percent of those who completely enrolled in the program. Um, who were considered unsheltered. They were able to obtain employment. Um, so that's thirty-two clients or forty-nine percent of the program um enrollees who were unsheltered.
Councillor uh Daniel and then councillor Hens- Hensley.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Callie, so much for sharing um with us these stats. I know when we first looked at this program, we had a lot of questions. And I feel like your team has done an amazing job of making us feel comfortable with this program, really helping the participants that we asked to have help. Like, I I think your team does a really good job of um looking at the needs and really working to wrap services around folks. And it's just been really impressive to see. And I've so appreciated the information that we get and the things that um people are able to achieve because of the support your team provides and that high level of respect and efficacy and dignity to help people get into a position that they may have not been in in a long time or ever at all before. And so I just really want to say thank you for that. I think this is a valuable service.
Okay, thank you, uh councillor Daniel. Councillor Hensley.
I'm just gonna echo what's been said, but I think I think the each person that is able to get a job um and to be able to sort of restart their life is phenomenal. And there's those little things like you mentioned about getting the slip, the slip shoes and things like that. Obviously, if you're homeless, those aren't things you just carry around with you. And then to just even shop for them and all of that, to all of those steps. And so this is definitely something that's taking people into the right step and getting them closer and closer to where they're obviously able to self-support themselves. Um, and sometimes we just need that help to get there. So I think it's awesome. Thank you.
And I'll wrap things up. That's very impressive. Did you say thirty-two clients were able to uh get in, employed? And that's about forty-nine percent? That's amazing. I like the storytelling as well. Um, keep telling those success stories because that's how funding continues to flow through communities like ours when people hear how successful those uh outcomes are. So keep up the great work. Okay, alrighty. Make sure Ms. Brooks didn't have her hand raised.
I do not.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, that brings us to the next item on the agenda. Um, annual update from another outside funding partner, eviction mitigation.
So as I um was coming to this meeting, I was thinking, how do I explain why I'm here? Um, and it it's kind of funny because Adam State class of eighty-four ran track with Jan's mother-in-law back in in the day, um proud, proud Grizzly. Uh, and in the beginning of COVID, we're talking about community connections, the beginning of COVID, when I started rehearing about all the Expected evictions and the governor hadn't put a moratorium on yet, I thought, holy cow, how do we get ahead of this? Called Callie, called my court friends, I called legal services, I called um. Uh, Don Mulgaris from the landlord side and I said, how do we do something so that we don't lose folks? And I learned a lot along the way. Uh, we talked to the Bar Association, the the twelfth Judicial District was the only. Program that had eviction mitigation in the state besides Aspen, which got a chunk of money from from the foundation up there. And we started with, I think, seven thousand dollars from El Pamar, got a little bit of of uh, COVID money. And then we ran out of COVID money, but we were having such success. And so we we partnered with the crisis. Um, with us, not crisis prevention, they were part of it, with Center for Restorative Projects. And we said, how, how do we get people to know that we have services? That will prevent eviction potentially, because we found that people didn't know that there were services. How do we get people to come see us? How do we get landlords to come take advantage? How do we get them to know what the state's doing? All of those questions, we, we were like, how do we do that? And it took, and we needed the courts to mandate mediation. But the courts sometimes don't cooperate um, with with those kind of rules. And the landlord's lawyers, where the money is, were like, we don't want to delay this, we don't want to delay it. So it was really essential that we got the courts involved, but that we promised quick mediation, so we weren't delaying things. What I found also, the other thing I in, I was interested to to hear is I got to speak with some. Um, folks from legal services in the Denver area and their attitudes about eviction and the burden on landlords were far different. Than a small town like us, where most of our landlords are moms and pops, own a house or two, and they need that money. And the governor gives a, a, a ban on evicting people and those people could lose their houses, right? And so we, in Denver, they were like, they just need to assume that there's going to be a cost to business of not being able to evict people. And it was a really interesting dynamic and I'm thinking, but my neighbor might lose her house. So we didn't want to do something that wasn't going to, that wasn't going to take into account the landlord's needs and the tenant's needs. And we found this beautiful kind of process, so it, but we we ran out of money and that's why I'm here. Because I, I was reluctantly pulled into the how do we find money to keep going piece of this. So, so um, I started it as development director. I'm not development director. We hope we have some more permanent funding. That Wilson, our development director is working on, that will come down the pike, but we didn't have anything. And I called, I called Heather and I said, this is a really impactful program. Best, talk about bang for the buck. Best bang for the buck. You keep people from being homeless, it is such an impact on their lives. Even if you don't impact to keep them from being evicted, if you can keep an eviction from their record, it's. Makes it much more likely that they're going to be able to get into housing again. So all of those things happened, um, because. We have a small community and we used our connections with all the players and we got something done and you guys helped pay for it this year. And the uh, total number of referrals received were fourteen so far in this year. The um, referrals from Alamosa itself were eleven families, eleven households. Uh, eight of those made it to mediation. Of the six that didn't make it to mediation, two worked it out before mediation. One went back um, to court without mediation because they couldn't get a hold of the tenant. We tried really hard. That's the hardest part, just get people into. To to the mediation. Um, and then uh, one already, and there's three pending that they they feel pretty positive about resolving. Of those uh, six that completed mediation, five were allowed the tenants to stay in their home with the landlord's consent. And one was um, reached an agreement to move out without a, an eviction. Again, and I think we've paid, we think we spent, uh, because we kind of got a late start on the money. I think we spent sixteen hundred dollars for those results. So it's just an amazing community-led thing. And I just asked for the money. So here I am doing, doing a thank you for, for that, for your contribution.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna have council make comments, uh, or ask questions. We have Counselor Vio.
Excuse me, thank you, Mayor. Amanda, thank you for your um, synopsis and, and all the work you're doing in Cali. Wanted to kind of combine these together is. Um, when people out in the community, every once in a while, I think all of us up here have heard this, what are you doing to help uh, fight homelessness? Well, there you go. Look on YouTube tomorrow, you'll be able to see this, this report. So thank you for all your work.
Amanda, um, I, I wanted to make sure. Now I'm paranoid. Okay, so Amanda, thank you so very much. I know there's a lot of studies that show that uh, there's a large number of people in our population or just one or two paychecks away from being homeless. Um, and you have during the most challenging times, make sure that um, those people that you mentioned in your report. Were not faced with having to deal with the homeless situation that they could have been faced with. And that makes a huge difference in people's lives. I personally know two of the people that you've talked that that are included in your numbers. And I know that they're extremely grateful for everything that you and your team has done for them. So thank you and.
It's my pleasure. It's a great project and we hope to keep it going.
Okay, thank you. Good job. Alright, okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda. Uh, business brought forward by our. First reading, um, by city staff, first reading of ordinance number seven dash twenty twenty-three. That's gonna be you, Ms. Rachel.
That is me, and I never question which microphone. I have to stand up. So, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. So I'm here for the first reading of ordinance number seven dash twenty twenty-three. We are adopting new building codes. So this is the adoption of the twenty-eighteen residential code, building code, energy code. Fire code, existing building code and mechanical code. Um, and so the impetus for this, just to make sort of a, a long story short, is there was a house bill. Uh, twenty-two thirteen sixty-two that dictated, um, and and it's, it's for climate change. And for energy conservation, we have some of the most progressive climate change regulations in the country. And um, sort of creating, you know, the, I, I read something recently that we're creating the guidebook for the rest of the country. On how to lessen our carbon footprint in Colorado. And so part of how we're doing that is by increasing. Um, the, the level of energy conservation you have to do in building. And so eventually in twenty twenty-six, there will be a state code that'll apply to all jurisdictions. The only problem is that in jurisdictions like ours and rural communities, sometimes our technology is not quite up to speed with the rest of the state. So, you know, blower door tests are some of the things we talked about at the work session when we discussed these code changes. Um, and so if we had changed our codes after July first of this year, we would have had to go to the most recent energy code, the twenty twenty-one codes. But if we change our codes before July first, we can go to a, a more, a less restrictive code, which is the twenty eighteen codes. Um, and since we are at this point, you never want your codes to really be more than five-ish years old. So we, we needed to update our building codes in general anyway. And I know that our former building inspector had really been hoping to adopt the existing building codes for a long time. Um, and this is a great opportunity to do that as well, but it means that we're a little bit on, on a time clock because we're trying to get this adopted before July. Um, all I can say about the content of, of the adoption is we have a. A slow implementation of the new energy codes, so there won't be consequences for our contractors. We've done robust public education. Um, we've done since November of twenty twenty-two, we've been meeting with a code expert that was hired by Excel Energy to help walk through. Actually, all the local jurisdictions, so the counties and cities in the San Luis Valley towards adoption of these codes. Alamosa County has already gone through their first hearings. Um, us all being on the same codes is also a nice way to. Make it easier for our contractors and stakeholders to have the, the continuity across jurisdictional lines. And um. Beyond that, it's, it's just a good thing to have. I mean, really, your most modern codes are the things that are going to make sure that your buildings are built to the safest standards. And um, adopting your new codes is, is always going to be the, the. The thing that gets you the highest quality product in terms of housing and in commercial design. So that's why we're here today. We're, our hands are being ever so slightly forced by the state because we weren't necessarily planning on adopting right now, but it's still a really, really good thing. Helps with our overall insurance rating. So we're part of the community risk program. This helps us get a higher rating, which means that our constituents have lower insurance costs. So overall, it's a good thing. Um, and it's a, it's a kind of a dense topic, but I'm happy to answer whatever questions I can. And if they get too crazy, I will steal Harry. So that is, that is this ordinance before you tonight.
Thank you so very much. Uh, Counselor Vio?
Mayor, I don't have any questions. I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
I move that we approve on first reading ordinance number seven dash twenty twenty-three. And set it for a public hearing on June twenty-first or soon thereafter.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion? If not, I would just like to make a brief comment. Rachel, I want to thank you and your team for the efforts that you put into uh, making sure that we're able to move forward. Uh, with the adopting uh, these new codes. Also, I saw Richard out there in the audience. I want to think, thank Alamoso County and his team for the training that they put on, I believe, a little bit over a month ago. Um, to where they allowed all the contractors in the area to come and get updated so that they'll know what the next steps are. Because from what I understand is a San Luis Valley colla- a collaborative effort to make sure that we're rolling out the codes. In the different uh, communities evenly, so people are not really panicking and and going to the extremes. That makes a huge difference in the home building industry, especially when we have a huge shortage of housing right now. So, thank you so very much. And we have a motion, we have a second, no further discussion. Okay, please start voting.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. You're not quite done with me.
Okay, alright, you could stay up there. Alright, we have a, a public hearing and second reading for ordinance number six dash twenty twenty-three. And ordinance amending the composition of the Historical Preservation Advisory Committee to add. Uh, des- designated uh, of the Sangre de Cristo National Heritage Area.
So there are fifty-five national heritage areas that are congressionally designated. It's an extremely special and unique designation for a region and it recognizes. Unique cultural heritage and history of the San Luis Valley. It is actually only three counties, Alamosa, Canales and Costilla. Um, and we were lucky to be included and we have this wonderful Historic Preservation Advisory Committee. And we have a wonderful heritage area and we think that the time has come where we have a permanent member from the heritage area on our historic preservation board. And so having, part of this is when we were creating our mestas uh, commemoration signs for Zapata Park. We realized that we'd been sort of working on this, this project together um, independently, sort of siloing. And so it's wonderful because we still ended up with beautiful signs, but probably could have been slightly more efficient if we just were on the same board with one another. So they will be on our board, they're a non-voting member, but you know, the, the resources they have and the knowledge that they have. And the, the cultural touchstone that they create for our community is truly invaluable. So I'm asking to add a permanent member to the Historic Preservation Advisory Committee. Um, from the Sangre de Cristo National Heritage Area.
Okay, Counselor Vio?
A question, Rachel, does our H-PAC, does our H-PAC want this?
They're, they're supportive of it, yes.
Okay, I don't see any other hands raised on Zoom, so. Counselor Vio? Oh, I'm sorry. Alright. So we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing for the second reading of ordinance number six, that's twenty twenty-three. If we have anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments in regards to the public hearing, uh, please come up to the podium and make your comments. Okay, don't see anyone coming up to the podium. Uh, Ms. Martinez, if you don't mind, if you would ask the Zoom participants. Raise their hand if they would like to comment.
Yes, if you're on the Zoom app and you want to comment, you'll use to raise your hand, feature in the bottom of your screen, or if you're on a telephone, dial star nine. Mayor, I don't see anyone raising their hand.
Okay, I don't see any hands raised, so we'll officially close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Uh, Counselor Vio?
Mayor, I move that we approve on second reading ordinance number six dash twenty twenty-three.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to the next item on our agenda. Uh, is we have a committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? Counselor Hinsley?
So, uh, let's see, so I, I had marketing board and Main Street and some of the things actually really connect. So for example, uh, First Fridays, where the marketing district really has a big part of that. But how um, is that partnership with Main Street? And boy, is First Fridays just becoming something that's a great. Um, it's a great attraction now for all of our local people and people from outside of the city. Um, so it just continues to grow and it's great to see that partnership and see everybody work together. Um, now, uh, just focusing a little bit on the marketing board, um, as you probably noticed, all the different construction going on. Uh, we're doing the construction on the RV park and similar to what Harry runs into is when you start digging, all the things that you might find. Um, and or the things that you run into, so definitely digging a lot bigger hole. People have asked if we're digging a swimming pool, but we're not. Um, so, but the RV park is going forward and hopefully should be done soon. We were hoping for an end of May. Completion, it's gonna take a little bit longer, but not, it shouldn't be too, too much after that. So that's exciting. And then back to Main Street, uh, I think I mentioned last time is there, people are having to roll up their sleeves, there's some homework being done. Some uh, little bit more deeper issues. And I was really impressed because at the last meeting, everybody had done their homework, really prepared to have discussions. Nothing's been finalized yet, but some really great things happening as we move forward.
Okay, thank you, uh, Counselor Hinsley. Alright, I don't see any hands raised or mics on, so we'll bring it over to our staff announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, not much from a staff update perspective. A reminder that we do have our volunteer cleanup at St. Benedict tomorrow at four. Um, I know from last month, we had a few volunteers and because it had been several months before that, there is a lot of trash. So we are really going to be grateful for all volunteers who are able to show up. On this Friday at ten AM, we have the police academy graduation. And um, we have three officers who have passed their post-test and will be graduating. So we are very excited about that. Um, I wouldn't be surprised if all of them already are placed. I mean, that's how big of a deal um, this police academy is for the valley, um, for law enforcement. And then the last announcement is we do have the CML Spring Outreach, which is Tuesday, the twenty-third at three in Del Norte. And so I think some of you are signed up for that and I will see you there, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. That brings us down to the last item on the agenda for the night, council comments. Do we have any council comment? Counselor Vio?
Yeah, Mayor, uh, just good luck to all our Valley athletes who are uh, competing at the state track meet the next three days.
Thank you. I don't see any more lights on or hands raised, so I'll just wrap it up real quick. I want to thank our team, um, Governor Polis. I had lunch with um, several of the council members along with the county commissioners. And uh, Sheriff Jackson and DA Kelly. I was really, really impressed with the united front. That we were able to present to the governor showing that we do work together as a team and the whole community. So thank you to all the council members who showed up and asked the, the good questions and provided input and data. Thank you, Ms. Brooks, for the talking points that, that you gave to me and uh, thank you, Mr. Sweet Sauce. So make, for making sure that we were in compliance with the rules and regulations of the sunshine law. So thank you. Alright, that's it. Okay, this meeting is officially adjourned.